I would go ahead and call the May's City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Kevin Neary.
President.
Councilmember Alex McCree.
Here.
President Jennifer Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Hallmark.
Here.
Okay. Do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to approval of the agenda. We did have an addition to the agenda. Is that right?
That's correct. There was a late addition this afternoon. There's a penny and rounding policy draft that's attached. We were just notified today that that will officially take effect immediately, essentially, and as a result, we do need to pass a policy. We have a draft, and what you see in there is just a draft form of it. We'll probably have to do a little bit of tweaks to it to make it work for us because we'll have to make some adjustments on the number of our things we charge out. But at this point, we'd just go ahead and ask you to approve it. As it's listed on the consent agenda, it does give me authority to make the changes with the review from the city attorney, but it won't change much from what you see on there in that draft form.
Madam President, I would move to approve the agenda as modified by staff, including item 6B on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who motion carries. Public comments. I don't think we have anybody signed up for public comments at all. And so that moves us on to the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda, or I would entertain a motion?
Madam President, I would move we approve the consent agenda as modified.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. And I'll hand it on over to new business.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're going to go ahead and open a public hearing for our 2025 City of May's budget amendment.
Yes. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the 2025 City of May's budget amendment.
Alrighty. On December 16th, 2024, staff was presented options for signage and street scape improvement on Academy Avenue. On July 21st, 2025, PEC provided design and prepared bids. On September 15th, council approved the bid for Hearthstone construction for your sign, your digital sign on May's Road. This amendment is adding $400,000 to our capital improvement fund, Fund IV. The recommended adjustment will not affect the amount of taxes levied on property owners. This will impact the end of year 2025 unencumbered cash balance carried forward for the 26th budget. However, we knew about this amendment when we formed our 26th budget, so we were able to work kind of around that. This is allowing us to increase our budget authority and fund for and to ensure in compliance with Kansas budget law. This was also published in the Hutchinson Tribune as anything related to budget has to be in actual paper form. It can't be website. So today, we are looking for you guys to adopt the City of May's 25 amended budget as published. And then we need a vote, and then we need to close the hearing. And if you have any questions.
Take a roll call vote, or do the amendment? Okay. Okay. Then I would recommend. Oh, we need to just. Yeah, we need a motion to increase the budget authority funding for the capital improvement to ensure compliance with Kansas budget law. Does anybody want to do a motion?
I'll second your motion.
I guess I'm doing it now, since I'm not running the meeting anymore. I can do it. I would recommend that we adopt the May's 2025 amended budget as published.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second.
There we go.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You want to do an individual?
Councilmember Kevin Neary.
Yay.
Councilmember Alex McCree.
Yay.
President Jennifer Harrington.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jeff Hallmark.
Yay.
Councilmember Dr. David Block.
Yeah.
Red. So at this point, we can close the budget hearing. And move on to item C, water and wastewater treatment rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back on October 6th, Raffteles was here and gave you their final study results from the year-long study they did on water and sewer rates. After completing the analysis on operating costs and debt service requirements, they determined that we need to ensure fund solvency by raising water rates by 4% and sewer rates by 10 and 1/2% annually for the next five years. I did, in the agenda report, put the tables back in here on page two, just so you could reference those once again from the, this is actually out of Raffteles's report. You'll see that on the water side, next year's rate increase will cause the average customer to receive about $1.74 rate increase on water and about a $4.68 increase on sewer for a combined increase of $6.42. Keep in mind that rates have not been raised for three years. The city attorney has worked with Raffteles to draft the two attached ordinances for consideration. And you'll note that under the recommended action, there are two separate motions, and I'll stand for those.
Any questions for council?
No, I might just make a general comment that appreciate all the time and the effort that went into the rate study for this. I know it's not a fun thing to be talking about increasing rates, but as it showed, it is necessary in order to keep up with the costs of what we're dealing with. So just appreciate all the effort staff put into this.
I would recommend that we move to approve the ordinance amending section 15-219 relating to the water rates and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to attorney's approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance amending section 15-219 relating to water rates and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to city attorney approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And moving on, we would want a recommendation to approve the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance amending section 15-429 relating to wastewater rates and number two, authorize the mayor to sign, subject to city attorney approval.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance amending section 15-429 relating to wastewater rates and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to city attorney approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will say before you move on, Mayor, that the majority of the work behind the scenes on this from staff was Sue. Without Sue's work on this, we probably would not be here today. She did a yeoman's effort, and I just think that should be recognized publicly.
Thank you.
Sue.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
I would also like to. Like Jeff said, I mean, no fun to raise stuff, but it has been three years with inflation and everything, unfortunately. Moving on to item B, PNR second edition, phase one paving.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bids for PNR paving, PNR second edition, phase one street paving improvements were received on October 28th, 2025. Conspec Inc., doing business as Kansas Paving, submitted the low bid of $451,473.60 for entrance paving improvements and phase one paving improvements. The engineer's estimate for both projects was $632,576, so we came in well under engineer's estimate. This was included in the 2025 project funding plan and has received temp notes. The city attorney, it says in here, says will approve, but the city attorney as of Friday afternoon did approve the agreement as to form. So I'm looking for action on this tonight. And the bid tab is attached this time.
Thank you for that.
Aye.
Any questions? Any statements?
I would just ask, you guys feel good about the bids? There's quite a bit of difference there between the low bid and the next one? So we feel like we confidently have everything covered there?
Actually, there was, and we're seeing that quite a bit in the paving bids as of late. I think it, who has the ability to get the work done? We're getting late in the season for asphalt. Asphalt plans will be shutting down shortly, so obviously Kansas paving has the capacity, and the others really don't, based upon what we see in the bids. It's interesting, living in another city and seeing the bids come back there, it's a completely different set of contractors working in that city. So it really is who's comfortable with working in certain communities, and obviously, we're reaping the benefit of Kansas paving wanting to work in May's.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the contract from the low bid bidder and approve the construction agreement with Conspec Inc., doing business as Kansas Paving, subject to the city attorney's, well, Tom's approval, which he's already given, and the amount not to exceed $4,501 million. Let's try this again. 451, huh? 451,000, $473.60 for street improvements for the PNR second edition, phase one neighborhood, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to accept the contract from a low bidder and approve the construction agreement with Conspec, doing business as Kansas Paving. City attorney's already approved it, and the amount not to exceed $451,473.60 for street improvements for the PNR second edition, phase one neighborhood. Authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to E, adopt revision to human resource policy that addresses whistleblowers.
As we've previously discussed, this policy was drafted to comply with a new state law that requires or that sets up whistleblowing protection for city employees. We already had a whistleblowing protection section in our human resource policy, but this revised policy brings it into compliance with this new state law. And what it essentially does is it protects city employees who whistleblow on various things from being disciplined for being whistleblowers or retaliated against for being whistleblowers. There's one part that's left for you all to decide. I think that was something that Kevin asked the last time we did this. There's two remedies that are set forth in the statute that cities can use to remedy a retaliation or disciplinary action taken against whistleblower that shouldn't be taken. The first choice sets up an appeal to the city manager. The city manager appoints a person to be the hearing officer to hear the facts about whistleblowing, and then that person makes a recommendation to the city manager, who then decides the case whether there should be discipline or not. And then there is an appeal to district court that's allowed if all that, after all that happens. The other alternative is a more direct appeal. It just says that if a whistleblower feels like that they have been retaliating against or disciplined for being whistleblowers, they have a right to bring a court action in district court to seek damages, and it also provides that the party that prevails gets paid their attorney fees. So if we prevail, that employee has to pay our attorney fees. If the employee prevails, we have to pay the attorney fees. As staff, I think that we're recommending the first procedure. We think it's more fair to employees and more fair to the city. It provides a process where that there is a way to address the situation before it goes to court. And I think that if you think about it, the attorney fees provision probably prevent most employees from taking an appeal or going directly to district court, because if they lost, they'd have to pay attorney fees. So I think in that way, the first one's more fair to the employees.
Yes, my only statement to that is if the whistleblower has a problem with the city manager, then where do they go? Is there a provision that could be written into that over a period of years that I've been here, and once or twice that's actually happened?
Yeah.
I don't know what we want to do with regard to that.
For example, if it was a department head that reported directly to the city manager, it wouldn't be a great deal to have to whistleblow to the city manager about himself. I was just looking. I don't think we did, but if that's an issue, we could add a provision that if the city manager is the one who is alleged to have taken the discipline or retaliated, that, for instance, it could go to the city attorney, which I don't recommend, or the mayor.
This addresses it. It's on page two. And it says, "The city manager shall serve as the city compliance officer. The city compliance officer designated is responsible for investigating and researching."
No, it's actually on page three.
Did I?
Appeal process.
Yeah.
This says complaints concerning violations by the city manager will be reported to the, oh, yeah, sorry, that's not it. Page three?
Right, right.
I think if we can put some language to protect the employee if there happens to be an issue with the city manager, I mean, it's.
I thought we had that in our existing policy. Well, I think what happened is it's in the earlier version. If he's the one that does it, then you don't appeal to him.
And I have no problem making that change because I think.
Yeah, it is. It's on page two of the actual policy, but it's page three of the report.
Yeah.
It's covered in there. I believe that it is, Tom.
Okay.
If you read the, it's section D1, I believe, towards the end of that. Does that cover what we're discussing?
Yes. It says, "Employees may file an appeal with the city manager within 90 days after the alleged disciplinary action."
This is saying it's going to go to the, if it's the city manager, it's going to be reported to the city attorney or the mayor.
Right.
Is that what you want, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
City attorney with assistance from the mayor.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I remember. Yeah.
I don't think we've ever had anything that's gone to like whistleblower status, but overall, I think that's a good policy though. Yeah.
So should HR be in all that too?
HR is typically going to be my designated.
Your designated, okay, okay.
We need to remove it away from. Needs to be. Needs to be at a different level.
Outside.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. As long as that wording's in there, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I like your recommendation of going to.
Having the appeal process that goes through the city before it goes to court.
Yes.
Yeah, because not everybody's got a bunch of money in case they lose.
I think it would be very discouraging for an employee to ever appeal.
Yeah. I would move to adopt the amended whistleblower document, section 1105 of the city human resource policy as presented in our packet.
I'll second.
Is that okay, the way that's stated?
You know, I didn't hear her, actually.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay, well, we have a motion to approve the human resource policy, section 11-5. And I'm just going to put the verbiage in there that we're going to go with through the city manager.
So I know what that means, yes.
So with the original appeal process now.
Option one.
Option one.
Option one. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Are we doing any executive tonight? No executive session tonight.
Record short meeting.
I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, we're done.